We got a moment of truth at the 50k real quick. Called by the small blind, he's pretty wild, that has us dominated, we need a king. We need a king and a turn card. King ball on the river, king ball on the river, king ball on the river. We get there baby, we get there. Get called, whoa my goodness, crazy flop, I actually gotta check that one back. There's a royal. There's a royal. There's a royal, hopeless, hopeless, do you see this royal? Do you see that royal? Ya'uzah. A quad dual love, good flop for us, moving out the easy clubs which is nice. Hope someone bets this or up against us a king, that'd be sweet. Huge chips out there right now, we win this and puts us into fifth, there we go baby. Come on. Come on. Come on. Hit with the magic fingers. Hit with the magic fingers, pair of eights strong, super slim, the triple up baby. Hell yeah baby. We got ace king. With our even stack. Looks like we're gonna play a big pot. Looking for tens, ace, 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 ace. The quads baby. The quads, it's overkill, but we'll take it. We will take it. Just set mine or to bet it, I do think I'm gonna bet it. And I can't, oh. Ahhh cooler. Nine ball. Boom. The toe equity. Alright, let me see, well let me open my spreadsheet for the man first. Oh that was a five dollar. Jay throwing out the duel. And snagging it, oh no. No. Put that pressure on him. I have to call T right if they jams. Actually I have to call all three if they jam. There you go, clicking the call any button, it's done. It's just flats though. And I'm just gonna put them all in. And looks like we're priced in, can doos. At least we've got the clubs covered which is sucks. Oh. Put me back into Broadway. Get it done like a boss with the blue. And that says get it, let's go, let's go, what's the bottom of the range, the bottom one at forty eight five, uh. Did it jam this? They just jammed it. Oh he walked us into it, we need a five. Need a fiver and diamonds. Bang. Let's shift this baby, come on. Come on. Let's go, no fucking chance. No fucking chance, come on, ho, ho. Bang, let's go, six to six down baby, let's go, we shipped that bitch, bang. Alright, we are live, we're live, we're live. What is happening, part of people here for a little study session stream, I'll be honest, I'm killing three birds with one stone here. Realized I hadn't streamed in uh almost two weeks and uh needed to get the studying with the guys, so I talked to them a couple of days ago. About doing this with you guys, a little one time preview into what we do here on Team Toe on Wednesday nights. I see Marley out there, I see Sal out there, I see Ian out there, what's up guys, what's up, what's up, what's up? I got a few hands here that were in the Team Toe private chat room lined up, I got a few hands here that. Dude Reno um sent my way. And uh.
You ready to have your hand broken down Dude Reno? Can you handle your hand being broken down?
Uh he and I studied quite a bit actually lately, it's uh it's gonna be a lot of fun and uh. Yeah, so we got that going on and if we have time then I have the Hannah Street from the tenth place it took last night if we can go through that. If we run out of stuff to look at, so um without further ado, we got the Team Toe guys on the call, so those people here calling. We got Dog Wisdom, he's also streaming right now. Um caster command out there for Johnny to be good, he's also streaming right now. Um if you don't mind Ian, if you can get Dog Wisdom for me, I'd appreciate it. Sal says he's here for the free coaching. That all man, that's what we're here for, that's what we're here for. Cool, so uh as I said, we got Dog Wisdom, we got Johnny Be Good, we got Red Rider, we got Average Matt. Uh I Hox Matt, depending on where you know him from, all on the call, so those are the voices you're gonna hear. Uh basically what I'll do is we'll go with their hand, um I'll hit all the Team Toe guys up with getting their thoughts. If you guys have any thoughts, go ahead and type them out there, we'll get to you too. And then we'll just uh see how far we go with this thing and see what we can say, sound good guys?
Like a game show where the prize is knowledge viewers at home.
I like it, I like it.
Yeah.
Alright, let me get my shit together. Hold on, hold on. Let me get everything all lined up here, I thought I had it. I was wrong. Cool, I'm using different monitors than I usually do and so it's messing with my head because things aren't where they're supposed to be. JPG what's up man? First hand is Jack, does that look good on? Oh I won't say that way, we're screwed. We're screwed, first hand up is Mr. I Hox Matt himself, Ace Jack, I think everybody just opened, right, nothing to see here. I like the opener. And we do get a caller. A bunch of callers. Ace high board, do we get checks, let's start there, there's one check. There's two checks, alright, see better know, what do you think, Mr. Dog Wisdom?
Yeah, I'm gonna bomb this, I'm gonna bet like two thirds pot.
Two thirds pot, uh what do you think, uh Johnny?
I think we have to bomb it.
He has to bomb, there's no question. Uh Red, what do you think bud?
I'm gonna go ahead and bomb it as well.
Bomb it, Team Toe, all serious aggressive guys, what's going on here?
Uh I mean I've never played a hand aggressively in my life, I have no clue.
You're not that guy. We've been trying to tame the Dog Wisdom beast for five or six years now, slowly but surely, yeah, I'm bombing it too. Um and reasons why we're bombing, what do you think Horn?
Um the six, the seven and the diamonds, they're all connected, so our hand is pretty good right now, but there's some turns that get dicey. Stacks are short, so we wanna set up for uh some some turn shove, get it in while our equity is good. And that's the reason for me going two thirds.
Yeah, I really like it and this is a wet board, right, so the draws are coming. Um the kings, queens, jacks, tans, nines, probably gonna float us one street here and it gets uh jacked up on the. Turn, we lose them on the turn a lot, um so yeah, this is the place to get by, yeah, we're races of course, we get by with weak races as well, I like it. Matt, what do you think, I didn't even go to you because I'm hoping you're just gonna bet this shit.
Uh yeah, I'm surely gonna bet it. Um. I guess if everyone's going big, I'll go big too, but I'm not sure what it is, I don't remember.
He's just gonna go with the crowd, huh, you're gonna be a lemming.
Well, I, yeah.
Uh my title says Sunday, thank you uh. Thank you selfish eyes.
I'm not thinking ace, king, ace, queens out there that beat me, so the only thing would be two pairs instead. Under pairs I could get value from, so. I wanna get big value, I wanna thin the field too, I don't want four people in here, so I guess bombing it will get a lot of folds hopefully. Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with it, like twenty five hundred maybe.
Sounds good to me, definitely sounds to me. Oh no. It's the beginning of the month, so we're gonna get all these uh.
I went small.
Alerts. You went small, oh shit. I missed it.
Saw the cards but as played, I'm still getting it in.
I went small and he jammed.
And he jams and we have to call, yeah, I'm going big still, I think I like that better for sure, but uh. Yeah, I mean I don't see how we get away with Ace Jack on this board, all the draws and all that stuff, so uh yeah.
Like I said, I didn't expect Ace King or Ace Queen to be there, I would have expected that to.
To raise a raise.
Bet raise or jam.
Looks like a flush draw or a straight draw, but that's just a bit of a cooler.
Yeah, I agree. Never fun.
On the plus side, if you would have played, if you would have played it like us, you would have still busted, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, if you're going both, there's no way you're getting one, that sucks. That's why we have bankroll management. That's right. So that stuff doesn't matter. Cool.
Nice, we get the teamie onto hand, let's see.
Horn's up, let's check him out.
Baby.
Well, we know what happens. Yeah.
You guys don't see anything.
We just don't know what happens in a good way or a bad way, right? Only getting there is after battle, so this is a replay, it's a little fucked up, so you can see that uh Horn is in the, I gotta call you Dog Wisdom because you're on stream, right?
Yeah.
Dog Wisdom is uh sorry, I'll try and do better, uh Dog Wisdom sitting here in the small blind, which is why he's completing the nine here. For two hundred. Big blind checks. And Horn's gonna lead out here, Dog Wisdom's gonna lead out here. And do we think this is good, what do you think Johnny?
Uh we are losing so much value here.
We are. Awesome.
Break that one down Johnny.
What's up?
You don't get off the hook that easy, how's that?
They're gonna say for you to break it down there Johnny.
Oh bring it down, sorry, couldn't really hear you, well we got top, we got, we got top pair of nine on a really dry unconnected board. Like yeah, okay, we don't wanna see overs, like but yet we still probably have the best equity here. So we wanna keep in the sevens, we wanna keep in the draws. We wanna keep in, you know, I mean we don't really wanna keep it at nine, but like we gotta at least try to keep the three from the big blind, we gotta try to keep the seven. So we gotta bet, I mean. In a four way pot, yeah, yeah, I still bet small, I bet small because it's already bloated because it's four ways. Like you might get two overs to come along, but.
Let's let's keep it, let's keep it real simple, right? When we're making this bet, Dog Wisdom, we betting for value or betting as a bluff?
So.
Betting for value.
Johnny's betting for value here, what are you doing Dog Wisdom?
Betting for protection and uh and value, because I think that.
Protection and value.
I think that, I think that draws can come along, but if I bet small, I feel like. With it being four ways, if I get floated too much, there's like no good turn cards, so if they call me here, I probably have the best hand is my logic. And it's over fifty percent of my stack, uh so yeah, it was like value and protection.
Yeah, the problem is is protection, I don't, I think for twice pot, uh the draws, if these guys are any kind of competent. Are just gonna go fold, they should be folding, um and two, I think you're you're betting for value, but you're only getting called by better. You're only getting called by nine with a better kicker. And then the occasional eight, ten. And that's the only draw, right?
Is there any value here, because this is like fifty, it's like fifty percent of my stack. Is already in the middle, is there any value in just taking this pot now, because like functionally my stack is like fifty percent better, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, but you have better ways to get more value, right, like you can get value from worse here, you could potentially check raise, I mean I would like a check jam better. To be honest, I'm still kinda leading toward check call. Um because I wanna keep their worst hands in and I don't really wanna blow up the pot if they're, if I'm behind because I have kicker problems and. I don't know if I'm getting away on the turn, but I'm definitely. Would like check jam better, because I used to give them a chance to to get more value by putting a bluff out there, right? Game of Thrones just says when you shove it, you force your opponent to play perfectly and that's never a good thing. I mean yeah, essentially, because like now they're just gonna call you with better nine, or they're gonna fold, you fold out the seven. Like pocket tens plus or calling, if there's some sort of weird way, that's a limped pot, I don't know how much that's out there. But again, like I think for twice pot eight, ten, I would fold eight, ten, you should be folding eight, ten.
We're out of position here too, right?
Because I wanted, you have a good price, but like what would you bet here?
I wouldn't.
It.
Would you just check? Do you consider it is a disaster if everybody checks behind?
I mean not really, we have a hand that's weak, but we're multi-way and.
You hit a six, you hit a six, you can, you could pretty much go to showdown at that one.
Yeah, I mean and there's some cards that we even better, I mean with a ten, we get a little bit more equity, it sucks a little bit. But we do block, you know, with the eight, nine and ten does give us some extra equity, six is a good card, a nine's a good card and eight's a good card. Ace or a king a little, but we can't fear the reaper. Right? So like I said, like if you check jam here, I would like that better, I'd probably check calling, to be honest with you. Um personally, I'm just trying to keep it all in here, but uh because I'm not gonna fear the reaper too much, but. Uh check jamming I think is better than this for sure. Because at least when you check, you give them opportunity to bet the backseat.
Yeah, it's just a weird spot to have like top pair weak kicker on ten big blinds in a multi-way pot, so. And it was an interesting hand and I learned something.
I guess, I didn't actually, you're right.
If you were looking to get it in here, like if we were looking to get it in here, like 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 Wisdom just did. Wouldn't that work better as like a check raise, so it's like.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, so.
They bet, we go ahead and jam it, we at least would get some more value.
Yeah, a little bit of my bad, I thought he had twenty blinds behind and just jammed it, but check jam for sure with ten blinds. I would lean towards check jam for sure. Pick up that extra equity by letting them bet in the backseat, the check behind, the check behind, you still have top pair right now. Could potentially still have top pair on the turn, pick up some equity and at worst you're gonna have second pair, like I wouldn't, I wouldn't be too scared. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because if it's a reaper twenty, about twenty lines, that's ridiculous, but I felt ten was a little less egregious.
That's a little weirder for sure, but again, I would still check.
Yeah. What if we checked, what if we checked and we got one of these like fishy guys, he's just like, oh, I'm gonna min bet into a two thousand pot. And like do we still jam or do we just give them like a min, a min raise?
I mean now you're talking about having ten blinds and getting facing a two blind, because you're gonna raise and then click, there's gonna be a one bet raise and then you're gonna click it back. And now you got eight blinds behind, we're getting super cray cray with the with the micro stack, I think we're just going too far down the battle at that point.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, one more, let's see what one's got here. Dude Reno, are you out there? Is Dude Reno on one of your chats, because he's not in mine, I don't think.
Love how Global shows the hand before it happens.
Yeah, they show the end hand, that's okay. I assume you're in the small blind here, right?
Replayer is so garbage, I wish I was good enough to, I think so, I don't know.
You're in the big blind facing a limp.
So we're the big one.
You're in the big blind facing a limp, so the check back seems about right.
Okay. That's a limp under the gun, you're under the gun one.
Yeah, and I like the check with the second pair, no kicker there. And I don't see, yeah, I don't see a reason to uh. To raise it.
Check call second pair.
I like it. Shit gets ugly. Oh well, for three hundred, I don't think we could fold, do it a bet like.
Check.
Any sort of, any bet, I don't think we could fold for three hundred.
I can't fold for three, right?
It's one blind. Does he do it again, oh he checks back, cool. Yeah, I mean for three hundred, I'm probably calling the turn two.
Yeah, it was more so the flop play, like I'm never folding the turn, but like I was thinking, is there any merit to ever raising by being results oriented, et cetera? But I think just check calling is kinda good and if he bets the turn big, we should just fold.
Ian thought they had the king, the thing with the king, Ian is like most of the time in a king, queen, seven board, if they have the king, they're going to uh see about the flop. And so when they check with the flop, I'm pretty sure, they checked the flop, right? Am I tripping?
He min bet the flop.
He min bet the flop, so I guess it could be a king no kicker.
It's just such a bizarre.
They definitely do that with like king eight. With king six here, they do that kinda weird stuff. And then also things like queen ten, queen jack, things like that, I think.
These, these weird hands where like you you're pretty sure you played it right, but if you're not sure, then you gotta coach to say, hey, you you did it right. Or if you didn't do it right, they can let you know.
Yeah, I think I like this one, I like really wanna fold the turn, but for three hundred, I just don't think we can.
Can't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I almost call it too with that minimum bet, that's just screaming.
Yeah.
For a call.
Is uh. Let me see, Dude Reno's in this chat, he's not, Dude Reno, are you out there man? Because I have your hands, but I don't really wanna go through them if you're not here.
I'm in my chat.
He was in your chat?
He was, he was, but.
You still chilling, Dudo?
Always E K L, I always forget the E K L part.
I added, I ated him, as the kids say.
Cool, well while we wait for that, do you guys have any other hands? Um I have dude's hands and I have my tenth place from uh. From last night too.
I'm seeing what I got. Yeah.
Cool.
Show me what you got.
I always like to give a chance for you guys to put your hands out there, uh before we look at mine, because you guys see my stuff, oh.
Let's see.
Alright, oh we, we'll run through some of these. So I played the sixteen fifty five k um last night off stream, um so that's what this is right here. Uh I was playing some rattlesnakes, kinda hanging out with Mrs. Toe. See if we get to a spot here, queen eight, uh anybody fold for one blind?
The small blind, it's pretty hard to fold here, I'm gonna just complete.
The big blind, facing a min raise and a call.
Oh when the other guy is in, how do I play poker, uh but yeah, when he's in and there's antis, I'm gonna defend here.
Yeah, I think so too actually, I think this is like right at the very bottom.
Probably below it.
You gotta put a horn spot here, this is exactly the same spot that, well, I guess for multi-way, uh that makes that pretty easy.
I like the fold, I like the fold.
Thank you sir.
Yeah, we got sense of him saying, chat, he is a crusher as well.
Who?
A chime in if you have your two cents, everybody wants to hear it, so feel free to type and now's the time to chat pro it up, everybody.
Now's the time, yeah, get it out of your system now. I like that. I like that, um ace king, pretty standard. Bet size, what do you think Dog Wisdom?
Um I like, I like me some two thirds here.
Some two thirds, what do they matter?
A lot of Broadway.
Hmm good.
And uh also having the king of clubs is bad, but I think there's enough Broadways and straight, strady type hands. That are gonna wanna continue for two thirds, so I'm going two third.
What do you think Matt? Ian says one k, third pot.
For all those things, I'd go third, yeah. The king is a good card, we're not scared of that so much. I guess whatever he's gonna call third, he'll call two thirds, I don't know.
You're gonna, you're gonna plead the fifth?
We want, I mean, we got this board pretty crushed. I I'd go small, I'd go small.
Small, what do you think Johnny?
I was gonna, I'm going small here, we got the king blocker.
Red, what do you think bud?
I think I'm going small as well, I think it's a pretty scary board for the small blinds range.
Hmm, yeah. I think I at first thought would like elect, because I I tend to. You know, lead toward big bets in spots like this, but I think you're right, I think with the king clubs, we can actually uh. Go small because they just have less, you know, they have less draws and we do have this board pretty darn crushed. Um so I think in this exact spot, I would go, I would go small on this spot, I think. I kinda like it, I wonder if I default to big here because I was multi-tableing and. But I do like the small bet here, I think I'm with you guys.
Do what happens.
I did bomb it, I had a feeling I would. Oh look at that, see, that was exploiting, that's like, that's the greatest thing about exploitative play, if you can justify anything by calling exploitive.
It's an exploit guys, it's fine, I was correct.
Alright, so last play, we bombed it and got called. What do you think now Dog Wisdom?
Man fuck, like this is such a setup, he has to have ten jack, right, but I'm still getting it all in.
Uh that's funny, uh what do you think Matt?
I'm probably checking this bad.
Checking. Okay, what do you think uh?
I mean what, what worse are we gonna get to call? That call the four, Jack ten, got there, two pairs. Are out there, the only thing we're beating is the club draw that we blocked. I don't, I don't like this board, I'm checking.
What do you think Johnny?
Chat calling pretty much all rivers.
Chat calling all rivers, what do you think Red?
Uh I think we have less than a pot sized bet left, so I'm gonna get it in here.
That too.
Um.
Okay, I mean. I just don't think.
Yeah, the nine in particular is kind of a bad card, um.
King, jack?
Nine sucks very bad.
And I don't know.
Queen, jack, queen ten?
I do think with the stack to pot ratio, probably in seventeen blinds start the hand, we probably just have to get it in here, but I'm not uh. I'm loving it. Uh Ian said he would bet one k because of stack to pot ratio, now it's weird, actually now it's super easy Ian, because it's less than a pot sized bet. Right, like if you bet one k instead, there'd be five k in there or six k in my stack, I think that would be a little weird, right?
Yeah, I'm not excited about this turn, that's for sure.
Um yeah, I don't, I think we have to jam it. I think we have to jam it.
Jam and say wow, it's amazing, he didn't have ten jack there, sweet. Jam and say, wow, it's amazing, he didn't have ten jack there, sweet.
Uh, he's nine with a gun. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight handed, I think it's okay fold. This is so weird for me because I have. The screen on a different monitor for you guys to see, and so it would stream better for you guys, but because of that, my arrow keys are backwards in my head and it's. Totally messing with my brain. Uh, horn defending, raising, what do you think?
Look at three better fold here.
What's your three bet size?
What are the stats on that guy?
Fifteen, eleven, three?
Uh, so he raises enough, uh, yeah, I'm gonna make it like. I'm gonna make it like twenty eight hundred.
Okay, how you feel about that, Matt?
That might be too early of a position to three bet, I'm probably just calling.
That's then towards flat, what do you think, Johnny, team flat, team three bet?
I mean, we're priced in. I think. I think it's player dependent. Like, if they're relatively tight, decent player.
You have the stats right here, what do you think?
They fold a ton of three bets. If I'm willing to put my tournament life on the line right now, I'm jamming it. But, I'm, I just feel like if I flat this, I'm gonna hate myself, cause I'm gonna be check folding so much. I mean. I don't know, I don't, I don't wanna get, I don't, I think it's too too good to give away too. Man, I guess we could, at this point, with the awkward stacks, we could get away from it. I've gotta talk myself into a fold at this point, cause I don't, I don't. Like, I don't wanna jam, I don't wanna jam twenty four blinds and him call me with like. And have me absolutely dominated.
Well, if he calls you and you, when you jam, if you're called, you are in trouble.
B, like, we're B.
Don't know about that, what do you think, Red?
End game, I would probably squeeze here.
God, I don't necessarily hate, yeah, but I'm kinda just like. I probably just flat it myself. One blind with one invested, like.
But everybody said they were gonna three bet.
I know. I think a jam is okay, I think it gets through enough. Button cut off hijack lowjack, I wish he was a little bit later in position, I'm a little.
Why not three bet all in size?
It's a little clenchy, um, I mean, twenty four blinds, I don't really have much room to be three betting. Folding, Dog Wisdom, you know what I mean, like you're kind of on that regenish stack. And I think because of that, I'd be more inclined to flat than three bet. That's what I do. Do flat. Pick up the gutter, um, checking to the aggressor, he checks back. Now, what? We'll go the other way, what do you think, Red? Should we lead in though?
Uh, I think I'm still gonna check here.
Johnny, what do you think?
Well, we gotta get some value. But I don't see how. We could get value without calling off. I guess we could bet like nine hundred, we could go kind of small here. Even though we're giving them the uh, the odds for the draw. We still got the ace, we're not gonna commit a whole lot. We're gonna keep a jack in. I think, I think I could bet small, I'd either check or bet small.
Think a check, a jack checks behind on the flop?
Oh no, Jack is not checking behind on the flop. Alright, so we go big, or we check?
So we covered all the angles, which way you're leading? If I cover all the angles, then I can't be wrong.
No, I checked back, cause I'm a fucking pussy, I'll I'll admit it.
Yeah.
You know, that's important, Dude Reno says, check call getting raised sucks.
Do you agree with that?
Uh, I actually, was that a big play siren, what the fuck was that? I actually do like a check here, um, as played. I'm not sure if my ace is good, I'm not sure if the spades, it's a weird fucking spot, I think I have some showdown. And my hand will be more defined on the river, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna elect the check and probably bet river.
He broke up, but I think uh, we're getting the point, so I think Matt, you got one left. You down with the D O G or you going a different way?
No, I'm check calling. Holding, I don't know, we'll see what he sizes it.
Yeah, I mean, if he goes like two K, we could probably just fold, but if he bets anything near half pot, I don't think. Uh, Marlin says, sorry, was F K flat, and with that flop, you could take. Charge when he doesn't check on the turn, when he checks the flop, I think he has mid pair here, thirteen seventy five and fold to a jam. So the problem is, is the. You open yourself up, one, Marlin, and two, I guess, you better have pot, what's worse, it's calling? Only the king of spades, maybe the queen of spades, and then all better aces. Are calling, like. So something you get value from, I think you probably get more value, I think you bet small, you probably get a little value, I'm sure.
Trying to think of hands that are behind that we get value from, like the king of spades, obviously.
That's it, right? I agree, but I think he's got queen ten with the queen of spades, king, queen with the king or queen of spades. Hands like that, right? And so those will come along. Um, those will definitely come along for a bet here. But I kind of on team dude arena, if I'm honest, and think, try and just get the showdown.
You mean team Dog or Reno, cause we, we were in agreement with each other, what's up dude?
I did check. And he bets, that's an easy call, right? We talked about it.
Yeah, we're snapping that up.
And that's a great card, now we're splitting with everything that isn't, that's underage jack, right?
No, I just check call.
Are we good?
Chop it up.
Uh, good way to check, right, we got him, we got some value from his hand, we probably wouldn't have otherwise, right?
And we're pucker calling on that river.
Absolutely, hey, Dude Reno is active in your stream right now, right?
Yeah, he said, I like getting the showdown as cheap as possible without going broke, bang, bang.
Cool, since he's here. Let's look at one of his hands.
Hey Dude Reno, we're gonna put you on the hot seat. About to.
That's right, dude, I was trying to say with, he and I are both uh, study the raise your edge stuff and uh. Both are in a couple of uh, study group together as well. Um, so yeah, we enjoy talking spots, so.
Also saying they used to call him pucker calling high school, I like it.
Uh, is he coming out for the summer?
Coming out for the summer, bro?
You coming to Vegas?
Let me know in chat. Are you going to Little Vegas, C Poo?
Little Vegas, C Poo. Uh, while we wait for that, alright, uh, Dude Reno's up, uh, what do you think, Horn? Dog Wisdom?
Roast me, uh, and such a mushy says, yeah, at least the weekend, maybe degen a bullet in the big five hundred.
Oh, nice, man, let me know, I just bought into that today.
Like a three bet here, I like making it like. Fifty one hundred.
Okay, what do you think, Matt?
Probably already punched the head, to be honest.
I think with the three X sizing, we have to flat.
What's the three sizing we have?
I don't, uh, I don't like squeezing this, no. I jam it to get the most fold equity, but I don't know if I wanna do that either, so I think.
Matt's mic broken?
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at too.
No, I can hear, can you, Horn?
Could not hear Matt, that was crazy, I'm assuming he said I'm an idiot and the flat it, right?
No, he says that he wanted. And I'm kind of with Matt on this, like, I kind of wanna get fold equity, but like, do I wanna do it with thirty three bigs when I could just flat it and close the action? I I probably, like I said before, I'm a pussy, I'd probably just flat it, but. But because I think thirty two, I think thirty three bigs is a little bit too much here, I think we just flat and close the action.
Red, what do you think, buddy? Oh, wait, I gotta give props. Vice just came in and reset for twenty three months. It never ceases to amaze me, Vice, every month, when I see your reset come through. Twenty three months, here it is.
Two years almost.
Two years. I've only been streaming for like two and a half years. Unbelievable, Vice, thank you for the support. I can't wait to see you soon, um, by the way, Vice, I was talking with Gigi and. I know she's staying at your house when she comes out for the summer and she's roped me into being. Part or second in charge for her party planning. So I might be reaching out to you for help, so heads up.
I don't know what's going on, but I know someone else who's good at planning parties, so I'm gonna reach out to you and make sure it happens.
Well, Gigi lives in Australia and I live in Vegas, so she's like.
It's an easy hand to get away from, comma, we get paid when we hit the board.
Say it again, uh, dude, it says, easy hand to get away from, we get paid when we hit the board.
But yeah, advocating for a set over my three bet.
I mean, god, if I thought Jim, if I seen Jim. Getting cray cray in this thing, which looking at his numbers that I have on him, he doesn't look like he's the most aggressive guy in the world, and he's three Xing. Under the gun, which has me slightly puckered, and I think I could probably. Flat and then not go crazy if an ace comes. Um, if I thought he was been kind of been spazzy a little bit and been more aggressive. Trying to see if there's a person here that's got numbers like that, that I can.
Like three betting me would make sense, for example.
I would say that I don't need a squeeze, to be honest with you. You know, I think there's five thousand out there and it's about, what, twenty percent of our stack, twenty five percent of our stack out there? Twenty five percent?
Always fall to a four bet.
And I would just jam it and take the squeeze, we don't really worry about the legalize it, flats, right, he shouldn't be too strong, so we don't have to worry about the under the gun razor. Which in this case, I don't know that I'm advocating to squeeze, but I can see a situation where I would squeeze in this spot with this hand sometimes. Just kind of throwing that out there, here, I think I'm flying so. Flats, pick up the nut flush. Uh, everyone's checking to the aggressor, I imagine, right? Uh, Dude Reno, we're facing a two thirds pop. What are you doing here, mom?
It's like, we're relying on hitting. I'm pretty sure that best case scenario. Only a slightly better ace than us, uh, so we're relying on hitting our club or our heart. I don't even know how to say the suits right, so I think it's a fold as played. Um, we're pretty much just chasing a flush draw with this price, we're most likely beat right now.
How do you feel about that, Matt, you agree? You fold enough flush draw?
Fuck, I don't know. I probably just jam it or run it.
Head to fold the E K L. I had to fold.
I don't know if he's gonna, he's not gonna fold though either, so I guess we're just running it against an over pair.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, we're gonna run into over pair here, like, eh, they're not folding if we jam, especially with over pair.
He's got ace, king or ace queen and.
If we flat, like, we're priced in, so we have to hit a hard on the turn, I just feel like we're giving up too much for. Little equity here, I think unfortunately, this is a pro fold.
Red, what do you think? You're on the red, you're on me right now. He's gone. Um, I'm definitely folding here, we get a ship price, we have a weird stack and. And that sucks, and uh, yeah, I remember this hand, Dude Reno was saying that, he looked at this one on Saturday in a different study group. And I had realized that once we had started to get through it, but, hey, it's good content for everybody who wasn't in that study group, um, and. If I remember correctly, he jams here and runs into queens. Oh, he flaps.
Oh no.
I mean, we're flattening, I don't remember, we pick up equity and I don't know if that's good or bad. Uh, I would at least jam and try and get some fold equity, I guess.
Out with that turn, like, yeah, fate's pretty sealed.
The chances of him checking here, and then he just jam into him, yeah, the problem here is we're only getting called by better. So the ju- the flat's weird, this I think is a mistake for sure, I do remember this now. And I think he still runs into queens.
She was student of toes, how do you not get there?
Dude Reno's not a student, man, Dude Reno is a, is a com- is a compadre.
He's like that, he's like a Chuck Norris, man. Like Dude Reno's like Chuck Norris, he's a lone wolf, he'll join up with a group. When he, when it comes around, when it's beneficial. Dude's badass.
Comes in, drops a few dimes of wisdom, and then poof, vanishes into the.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much, unless you can con him into doing like a four day, a four part series. That's always fun too.
That was fun, actually. Uh, yeah, I like the open with the night, I think that's cool. Uh, multi way. King high board, see better no horn.
A little bit gross, I'm gonna start with the check.
Start with the check, what do you think, uh, Matt?
Sure, second pair, one behind us, yet. Yeah, I guess we'll check and see what happens.
Johnny, you're gonna bet big?
That aren't good though.
No, I'm not, this is middle pair, it's just middle pair, like, I'm gonna check, but I'm gonna make calls, I might be making a call. But I'm, I'm checking to evaluate turns, probably betting most turns if it checks to me, if it checks down.
Red, what do you think, man?
I'm gonna check, oh, here with second pair.
I think, uh. Kind of leaning toward bet only because like. I just don't think it's gonna get any better than this. And I kind of want it in the field.
We can wrap the king, we got all the kings in our range.
Be just nine of clubs have any equity?
Honestly, like, if I bet and take it down here, I'm not hating life, like, that's alright. But I hate when, like, uh, a check here, I'm def- well, obviously check calling, we can't fold to one bet. Um, but, like, it sucks when we check call or checks around and then. It's like a queen on the turn, and a jack on the river, or a jack on the turn, ace on the river. It just gets ugly. But there, there are good cards that come on the turn, yeah, um, the question is, is do we turn nines into a bluff? If an ace comes on the turn, for example. What do you think, Dog Wisdom?
Yeah, I think that we kind of need to punt if an ace comes on the turn, if we bet the flop.
What about a club?
What, what numbers associated with that? A five of clubs? Yeah, I think we continue the bluff. Wait, what the fuck are we even getting to fold?
Right, that's where I was at, like, what are we getting involved?
So like, clubs and kings are always calling, or, does an eight call us here, I guess it does.
We can get better to fold.
Typically, an eight should call us here, I think.
What better are you getting to fold here, Matt?
Ten jacks.
That's not better. Tens, queens, jacks.
So maybe, maybe betting doesn't make sense, is what he's trying to get.
All of those things are gonna.
If we double it, we could get hopefully better to fold it.
Sure, so that's what I'm saying, right? We have to be prepared of what cards, if we're gonna bet this flop, what cards will we bet in the turn with, what cards will we check giving up with? Uh, dude, Reno says he likes betting, we get the king on our range, check call and get exploited too much, I think. And that it's hard to call two streets when the turn is unfavorable, we feel better double barreling than check calling two streets, I agree. Martin says he thinks a club is good for us, I agree that too. Um, so I, I would lean toward bad. Now the question is, what size? We need to go two-thirds, babe? Can we get away with sixty? We want to split the difference and go seventy? Sixty-eight? What do you think?
With our stack being what it is. Four hundred, maybe?
Four hundred, maybe? So what's that? Ah, yeah, that's like sixty-ish, right? Martin says four eighty. Uh, what do you think, uh, the hood's your name tonight? Dogg wisdom. I didn't hear you, buddy, broke up.
I'm gonna go with, uh, four twenty there, toe.
Four twenty there, he's been subliminal. What do you think, Johnny?
I mean, if I was gonna bet, I'm gonna bet big, I'm going five hundred.
Hold on, that's a rep, you back yet?
I'm back. I was thinking five hundred as well.
Yeah, I'm kinda in the sixty range, what, I'm gonna calculate here. What is that? Seven sixty, ten, sixty percent, four fifty-six? So, yeah, four hundred, four twenty-five. Kinda seems good to me, I think. Hey, Rudy, what's up, anybody? Good to see you, man. You playing the big fifty, Rudy? Uh, yeah, not bad, I think it's a little small. Cause like, now the eights are calling and like, I don't know. I wanna put a little bit of heft on it, make it look you know, bigger than it is by going slightly bigger than half, but I don't think it's too terrible. There's the call. That's a good card.
It's like the best card on the deck.
Double barrel.
I can't wait to get cooler by him having, yeah, we need to bet again.
What are you doing now? What size?
I'm betting a thousand.
Bet a thousand, he's going pretty decently big. What do you think, uh, Johnny?
Yeah, I think I, I think I go big, too.
Anything big's gonna commit us to a shove, so we either gotta shove or go small. I mean, if we're gonna bet a thousand, he's gonna shove, we're gonna call anyway, so either we can get him to fold something with a small bet or we're just gonna put him in. So I'd either jam or.
Mostly, um, oh, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, I got distracted. What do you think, Red? What do you think about the stacked pot ratio predicament and your options here?
Uh, I was thinking something like eight hundred and then just jamming off almost all rivers.
Martin says jam. Martin, you get caught by what? What are we getting value from? We turned this hand into a bluff? What's the plan, man?
Racket of brew.
Hopefully an eight. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think the stacked pot ratio is interesting. Um, I don't wanna lose this guy. Give him the stacked pot. I also don't hate a check.
One of his chips now.
I wouldn't jam the river. The thing is, like, he does have clubs, how did he, how many tips did he start the hand with? Would you just jam clubs here?
We gave him a price for it there, can't give him a price on the turn, man.
It looks like he has an eight.
It does, um, I guess I don't want him to get away. So maybe the bet is, uh, maybe go small, get five hundred?
And maybe five hundred is the bet.
Um, that's why I wouldn't jam on it, yeah. Six hundred, okay. I mean, how the fuck do we fold here?
I mean, I fucking, I hate it, I hate it, I hate it, put them all in. I hate it, by the way, if I didn't mention, I hate it, I hate it, but I'm all in.
I don't see how we fold here.
This guy pulled a king out of his ass, like, what? How does he have a king here?
Maybe he's in the blind, he can have pretty much anything.
Not folding.
And we bet small, too. Oh, this is a five dollar seventeen fifty. Oh, I'm snap calling. I'm snap calling.
Yes, it's so below. Oh, no, dude.
I think we looked at this hand too, dude, you know? Looks like we're never good at him when he clicks back like that. Man. I mean, he has to have exactly a king, like, God. I think he's got some eights. God, some club draws.
It's some stupid hands like Jack ten, King Jack.
Well, King Jack's a good hand, Jack ten, I think, does a stretch.
He's got like every Broadway with clubs, including K X. He's also got like AX, he's also got like AX with clubs. I'm not folding here, but.
Could be the A set of clubs, but I would think that the A set of clubs gets all in on the flop.
It should, right? Really should.
Yeah, next six five, I'm, I'm calling.
Be right back.
I mean, I hate to say it like this, but I guess this is why I have fucking bankroll management twenty thousand buy-ins at the five-dollar level. So I can make this call, not hate life. Man. Cool. Raise, feedback. Crazy deep, I like the size.
Oh, no, he did pop it, okay.
Yeah. See better, no, Dogg wisdom?
He left.
See better, no, Matt?
Yeah, I think I'd bomb it, like, seven fifty.
What do you think about that, Johnny?
It's the oneest board in America. Gotta, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I don't wanna get raised off of it, though. We got the queen blocker, though.
Bag.
We're super deep.
We are super deep.
What was the action pre?
Actually, I'm going small.
And a call. Now the question is, feedback. Uh, Johnny says small. Matt said big. What do you think, Dogg wisdom?
So I actually had a very good study session yesterday, and because this player thinks that, uh, maybe the ten isn't out for him. Giving him a worse price is actually good, so betting small like three forty-five makes a ton of sense here. Blockers.
Red, what do you think?
Uh, sorry, I just sat down, I missed, uh, what happened. I've been gone for about five minutes.
No worries. Martin says, what would raise me off this hand? Nuclear Holocaust. I mean, generally, it would be a wet board, I agree, Johnny, but I mean, we have two queens and a queen of spades, like, we block spades, we block queen ten. We block everything. God, do I wanna bet this?
Check raise?
Give me that we have the queens and the queen of spades, like, I'm almost half thinking about check calling, cause bro. I haven't convinced myself of that yet. Give me this to sixty percent. I think I kinda like that better. I think I do. I think I like sixty percent. So we bet like six hundred or so.
Fifty-eight.
Yeah, I think I like that better. Could be check call, lead turn. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily lead turn either, like, I want him to keep barreling, right, uh, Marlon? Sixty to seventy-five cent, do the witness of the board, think we got a lot of folds. Yeah, but with the queens and the queen of spades, do we wanna get a lot of folds, like? Like I said, like, we blocked the ever limit shit out of this board.
I think a lot of folds will be a lot of value, though, right?
Yeah, I kinda like the sixty-ish percent. Dude, Reno did check, God, like, I don't necessarily hate that either.
Not the worst. As long as you don't fall and hit the fold button, I think you're good.
And I would check call and not check raise, personally. He did go the check call, right, great card. Has played, have to check again, right? No questions there. And.
Check call, check call, check call.
So this is an interesting spot. The question is, check calling here or check raise here? What do you think, Dogg wisdom?
My immediate gut said it, actually, like, my, like, just seeing the eight, I immediately just felt like check raise.
Why?
Cause it's like, we got a lot of fold equity at this point.
Fold equity, what do you want fold equity for? What are you trying to fold?
Uh, I guess you're right. So I'm fearing the, I'm fearing the draw.
The draw that we have, it's gonna hit us most of the time, right, like, the only draws we fear is seven.
Backdoor hood.
And a spade, maybe? We block that and I mean, the hearts are backdoor, we should give them some. Some consideration. Uh, match is calling. Uh, Ian says feels like ace or kings, uh, God, I mean, we can't just fold, right? If it's ace or kings, you're suggesting fold, Ian? Reese says check raise. Martin says check call, let them continue. Here's the thought process, though, like, if they're bluffing here and we call this, how often do you think they're gonna continue bluffing? Cause you're gonna check the river, right, Marlon? If, uh, if you're check calling here, you're not gonna just lead into them, I imagine, right? And when you do, if you are just gonna lead into them, how strong does that look, right? It's kinda awkward and weird. Um, so that's why I would say check raise is probably better, because this is when we get value from the jacks, overplayed hearts, overplayed spades, ten X, like, this is when we get the value from them. And when they miss the river after we called twice and it's a paired board and it says coordinated, I don't think they're gonna bet the river for it, but I think they're gonna check behind a shitload. And that sucks, we get the value here. Not to mention, there's thirty-three hundred out there and about nine K in our stack, right, a third of our stack already out there. Um, so yeah, Rudy says he has ace jack, I think that's very possible. Um, so yeah, I mean, I would, I think I would jam here, personally.
Is, is pretty sweet. With all in-game to check instead of bet.
Trying, he's gonna check, hope we check back. Well, I mean, shit, now, I'm definitely jamming.
I'm calling here.
Why?
What, what is calling us that we're meeting when we jam here? Think it's like he has missed, I think his range is like, missed. His dr- his range is missed draws, uh, weird ass, weird ass, like, seven-ten, uh, some J X. I think the majority of his range is like missed draws at this point, so I'm trying to think of like, what better, what ve- what worse hands besides like J X that are calling us here?
Ace jack, king jack.
He has some, he has some two pair, too.
I guess ace jack and king jack is about it. Jam, as Jeff says, makes you look like you missed your flush, because ace jack is calling, he's definitely calling ace jack. Seven-ten, um.
Seven-ten's beating us.
Lead the turn? I think seven-ten probably would lead the ten, Marlon, because of all the draws out there. Wants to get value from an eight, wants to get value from a spade draw, wants to get value from a heart draw.
I think we're ranging them all.
Say again?
Even has some weird ass two pairs.
I think we're ranging them wrong, I don't think he has seven-ten and is under, under the gun three bet calling range.
I agree.
Not in his hand.
I agree.
It's aces, kings, maybe a set of jack, nine, he doesn't have an eight. Queen ten, I doubt it unless it's suited, so we're either losing the over pairs or we got a jack X.
Queen ten suited makes a lot of sense here.
Queen ten suited, you would call a three bet under the gun, maybe?
I mean, you blocked the shit out of the queen ten. It's gotta be queen ten of hearts, right, or queen ten of hearts or queen ten of clubs, right, like? I don't know, like, I'm just, sorry, God, these damn things popping up here.
So I guess we're only losing aces, kings, and then the set of jacks. Otherwise, we'd be.
Yeah, I mean, you might have talked me into, uh, you're blocking queen ten, yeah, you're blocking the shit out of queen ten, that's what I'm arguing, Jeff, um.
So it might be a jam, then.
My problem is, like, I guess you kinda talked me into, like, I guess we're targeting ace jack. Right, like? That's it, right? King jack? And ace jack?
Only hand that, like, are, the value range he has, too, that's worse is low, like, you wanna talk about, like, all the bluff hands he doesn't have? He also doesn't have very many value hands that are worse.
Martin, we're not talking about folding here, we're talking about if it's jamming or flattening. Never fold. Is it jamming or flattening? Martin says, if you're trying to die, it's your time to die, jam. I think we could flat. I got, you kinda talked me into it. God, he's got so many jack X, but he does have aces and kings, too. No read on the player.
He has jacks as well.
He's got eights, too. Yeah, I kind of I'm wondering, I'm debating it, do I have some toss-up?
I wouldn't hate a jam, but I also, I also like a call a little bit more.
He does call. There you go.
The hand I didn't even consider.
Really, no.
Makes sense. Well.
Doggerino is autumn tonight, guys.
I think three, that, under the gun, he's raising ace eight, dude is under the gun, calling the three bet, okay.
It's a little wide. Uh, here he is on a, uh, a, uh, Bovada hand. What are you doing here, one?
Just gonna jam it.
Uh, what do you leave here? Five-seven's a call, but it's a jam, what does it leave you with that we call? Considerations, five K. Fuck, I goddamn erased it, Marlon. Uh, but the question is, is I think again, like, it was the same thing we were asking ourselves, like, what wor- if we jam there, are we jamming for value? We're jamming for value, right? We're not turning queens into a bluff, obviously. So when we jam there, what worse is calling? Ace jack, king jack? King jack's cringy, but I think they probably call, right? And that's it? All his bluffs are gonna fold no matter what? So that was what the argument for calling, is that? And that's it, all his bluffs are gonna fold no matter what, so that was what the argument for calling is that, we just don't get value from very many other things. In that spot. So it's a call. Uh, what do you think about this one, Dog Wisdom?
But it might cut out, I'm jamming this.
Jamming it, what do you think, Matt? Ten blinds and a dream. Matt's down with the D O G, what do you think, uh Johnny?
Hello?
Hello? What are you doing Johnny?
Uh, is this, if this is final table, I'm just flattening it, like I'm going I C M, but if it's not, I'm jamming it.
Have all these goddamn conditions. If the sun isn't Jupiter and my keyboard is pitched at a thirty-eight degree angle.
It's so much, it's so much different shit, we don't know.
Uh, Jeff says rip it, what do you think, uh Red?
I'm gonna rip it here.
Uh, Jeff ripping here, I like to rip, I'm done, I like it. Check, oh no, don't get limbed, don't get limbed. Oh, golly, this just sucks.
This is where I argue, playing brain dead and just shoving every hand is, makes your life so much easier.
Just to see what this fucking guy does. I don't even know that we could just fold to a limp leave Marlon for one blind, like. I would do this with any two cars in this spot, like, just about. Really awkward, but I mean, the jam pre is the answer here. And like, I guess, I don't know if you remember, uh, Dieterino, if this guy was like. Aggressive or active or not? Like, did he have a lot of double barrels type of thing, or is he a one and done type of yak? Cause if he was a one and done type of guy, probably gonna float and see what he does in the turn, if he checks the turn, you know, Lord help him. But if he's been an active, regular standard player, yeah, I don't think he would recall. Alright, so we got the flows and I guess we just fold down, we just don't have the chips.
Being on both, why do you don't get enough lifetime or longer stats either, so you can't really read a hut on there.
Right, yeah, we got, I think fold turn is the answer here, we just don't have the blinds to whittle down from ten to six. Right, uh, so, we just gotta fold. Sucks. Pick your problems, wet ass board.
Damn it, ruin it.
Oh, Jeff Jim, I missed your resub, neck and neck, you got a twenty-three month resub too, fucking animals guys, the two of you. Ian's not too far behind that either, I know that.
Animal.
Savages, uh, yeah. How does this go wrong? The aces, just jam it, just jam the hundred and sixty-four blinds. Uh, cool, he checks, everybody's seat betting, right, uh, what size do you think?
Actually betting, uh, third pot, we have the ace of hearts, it's a pretty good card, uh, so I'm betting a third pot.
Third pot, Johnny, you down with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going small too.
Not so average, Matt?
Yeah, I'm down with the crew.
Down with the crew, Jeff says one seventy-five, what do you think, uh, Red?
I like a third pot here.
You like a third pot here as well, uh, once it vibe bigger because of the flush, I think, the thing about it, Jeff, like if you had, didn't have the ace of hearts. I'd probably go bigger, uh, but the ace of hearts like, I'm not too scared of the flush. Um, yeah, so I think one seventy-five is a big, big. Whereas I think it's a pretty decent bet with a hand not as strong as this, um, in this case, I think I'm with you, I'd go like a hundred.
One ten to third, yeah.
Uh, he goes big, uh, yeah, I just don't think we need to go this big. Did we get value from a bunch of other things by going small? Uh, we get caught, awesome, go big, get that value, we're exploiting.
Yeah, he's got a queen.
Uh, that is a decent card. What do you think now, Dog Wisdom? I said like one fifteen, Jeff, a little less than third, or a little more than the third, generally is my quote unquote.
Make it two thirds now.
You down with that, Matt?
I'll probably go small again. We don't wanna scare him with the king, right, and we got the ace, a heart. If he has a queen, we don't want him to fold, so I kinda wanna go slow and keep dragging him along.
Controversy, what do you think Johnny?
Uh, I think as played and if I bet, I think I'm going small again here, cause I got the ace, right? So that means he can't have it, and even if he has a flush, you're, has the flush. Like, I'd much rather just bet small and keep. Keep less in.
Keep more.
Well, more, yeah.
Keep less strength and more hands.
I actually think I'm going about two thirds pot here.
Still going two thirds pot here, uh, Jeff says wet board on two thirds pot, Martin's about the hell out of it, ah. God, with the ace of hearts, I'm kinda like in, uh. I'm kinda with Matt on this one, I think. If I was bluffing, I would go. Like if I had jack ten off here, you know, or even jack ten with a heart here? I would go two thirds, but with the aces, with the ace of hearts, like, kinda good, man, like I kinda wanna keep a queen in. Um, all the draws are coming around no matter what, um, but I kinda wanna keep a queen in. And I think if we bomb it. It's easy for the shitty queens to get away. I wonder if we go like. Two fifty, three hundred, if we keep a seven in. I think there's any size we can keep seven, I think a seven probably folds. If, uh, they don't have a hard to go with it, a decent hard to go with it.
We have jacks, tens, might still call, yeah.
Just as wet board, but it's wet in our favor, right, like, he didn't three bet his pre, he didn't three bet or check raise the flop. I kinda agree with Matt, especially when you have aces with the ace of hearts, like, doesn't have ace queen, doesn't have ace king. Um, he's got some king queen, um, but we have the ace of hearts, like he shouldn't have the flush. I think small is the way to go.
Whatever, should have checked raised it if he had a flush, he would have brought it out by now, so I don't, I'm really not worried about that.
Yeah, I think this is a little big, I would go smaller. How we get the value?
I mean, we are super deep too, so I guess if that's the.
I flat.
Oh, fold.
Uh, Dog Wisdom, you fold? Profold?
I am not holding, I'm calm.
Johnny doesn't have the profold, what do you think, uh, Matt?
What the hell do we beat? All the two pairs got their flush, if he was holding it, got there. We block ace jack. That's about it.
Matt's kind of coming to that.
That was the deal with that isn't nutted. King queen, king ten, queen ten. I mean, we beat king jack, we beat queen jack. We beat king X, we beat ace queen, we beat ace king, I don't think he has those.
See everybody in a single pair hand on this river though.
Does he ever bet a single pair, I'm not saying no, that's why you're going to the profold. Uh, jack X of hearts, does this maybe, or jack X with a heart maybe, the jack X, I mean, after we. Bet this, uh, we bet twice, right, yeah, I mean, we bet this twice, jack putting on a blocker bet, like, fuck, man, like.
Think it's just a disgusting profold.
Jack ten with a heart? I mean, who's got the nuts to do that? If you had jack ten with a heart, it's pretty sick, right, cause like, you block ace jack, you block the hearts, like. I, I don't know what I think, uh, about it, um. I think it's a sick ass move, I just don't think anyone that any of us play with, I don't know what level this is, but I know generally speaking. Dude are gonna play similar levels to I do, so they ain't doing this shit, but I think it's kinda crazy next level shit. This is the fi- twenty-two dollar five K.
I like Phil Ivy plays the twenty-two dollar five K, you should probably fold.
Yeah, I, I agree, uh. I think I would fold too, man, I think, uh, everything gets there and this is scary as fuck and we have one bare hand. I think I would fold too. That sucks.
It's fold.
And by going small, we at least let him get there, but we also didn't value on ourselves, so we got out pretty cheap on that too.
Yeah, yeah.
Results oriented, I guess.
Just ran out and he acted in such a way that, you know, I like that Dieterino is good, he didn't get married to top pair in a spot where. I don't know how good top pair is very often.
Gotta be able to fold aces once in a while.
Yeah. Get them all in pre. Hey, you know, thanks for the raid, man, hope we had a good stream, welcome guys, welcome, says raid sucker. What's up guys, here in the lab right now, me and the team toe guys and the guys in the chat. Um, don't think many people buff that spots, I agree, like I said, with the jack ten with a heart, like it's kind of a sick spot to do that, but. Who's got the balls to do that shit? I, I don't know that, I got the balls to do that shit, I think it's really interesting, we could talk, we go down that road and talk, you know, like. You know, is that a good play? Kinda is when you have the jack ten with a heart, right, block all the nuts pretty hardly. Yeah, uh, here we go with the king queen suit, anybody three betting this?
Get silk, maybe, yeah.
Nobody said yes, uh, I have to flat two. I don't wanna like three bet four and then fold to a four bet and, I really don't, I really wanna see a flop with this hand, right, this is a hand that flops kinda pretty. Jeff says good spot for a three bet, I would, it's funny you say that Jeff, like I would tend to three bet the offsuit one because I don't really give a crap. About folding king queen off to a four bet, but king queen suited, it's kinda cringy. And personally, I have this guy Mark is a really aggressive guy, so he is the kinda guy that like, four betters with ace ten here. According to the notes that I have on him, and so, that sucks, I really wanna see a flop against.
Taking it post floppy.
You know, I like the flat. Top pair, good kicker. Do we take the lead, what do you think, Mr. Wisdom?
I think we check, give him a little bit of rope.
Great, great, what do you think Johnny?
Yeah. He's a great, he's super aggressive anyway, yeah, I give him some rope too.
What do you think, not so average?
I'm probably betting that. Hmm, third, twenty-five hundred.
Red, which way you swinging?
Come on, team one and third here.
Team on one third, Marlon says thirty-seven fifty. Do I like one third, do I like to bomb it? I ain't gonna lie, game, I lean towards bombing it, but do I like it?
We're getting worse to fold and only ace kings calling.
No, I think king jack is still calling, the thing is, we block queen jack, which is why I'm kinda leaning towards small. Is less of that kinda stuff. Um, I don't think he's got, uh, ace queens out there, right, because there was no three bet. So Chris still has ace queen, it could be checking with the gut shot. Um, that they'll call a small bet, maybe not a big bet, yeah, I think I, I think I like small when we have the queen. I'm cool with that, man, Dieterino is on the same page. And, uh, we get over called by the big line. He checks again, what is the plan, sixty percent to fold on ace high, just take it down now, weaker king maybe, ten come along, we get max value. I don't know, we have to go sixty on this board when we have the queen, I, kinda like. The ten's gonna come along.
He said that and then he bet small.
He did, but that's why he posted it, right, he's not sure, uh.
We're gonna bet small again on this turn.
Yeah, that didn't change much. Same rules apply.
Anybody disagree? Half pot here, Jeff doesn't know that we hate half pot bets. Yeah, I think, um, we gotta bomb it here myself. Eleven K is what Marlon says, I'm kinda on team Marlon this time. Yeah, I kinda like it, you know, if he's got the weaker king now, he's always coming along. Right, like the draws, we wanna get value from him, I think people are overplaying that, especially this deep. Uh, now I think we kinda got him, we kinda wanna give value, yeah, I think I'm, I think eleven K sounds about right. Jeff says no laughing all time, you know, uh, that sounds about right to me, man, yeah, absolutely.
I like the L U P too.
I would go bigger than this, for sure. The reason why I don't like half pot bets, I don't know where we are. Whereas when I bet big, I narrow his range to when he does this, I'm like, oh shit. Like I beat king jack. I mean.
Yeah.
Fuck, this is so awkward. Super duper awkward.
He's in the big line?
Well, I'm just thinking, he's in the big line, so he does have, god, you think like king eight, king nine, king seven, all those would. Check call again?
Set at ten?
You think those would check call again?
Check call, check raise? You got a king now. Set at six, and if you got lucky.
I'm just trying to think of what he does this with. That's worse, Marlon, king jack. I think king nine, king eight. You call here, what do you do on the rivers, punch you a ton of bad cards, yeah, I think, when he does this, the odds of him.
Queen jack?
When we call this and he's, he's gonna jam the river like a hundred percent of the time.
Jack is definitely a bluff he has.
He really doesn't have much bluff.
No, this is starting to spark, like I'm leaning toward fold, hating it, and I would bet big too, but. Yeah, if I bet big and he does this, then this is so awkward, but. It's kinda better to hear a fold than hear a call here, what is this, this is the fif- fifty K? Doesn't say the buy in, but I imagine the fifty K is a bigger buy in one? Which makes me even more likely to fold? Oh, this is twenty-two.
Twenty-two five K?
He's an eleven, seven, five, like I'm so, so leaning toward fold. I'm going full.
I like it.
Cringy. Three bet ace king seems standard, see bet the board, what do you think, Dog Wisdom?
We can actually see about pretty small. Um, bet like five hundred, one and done this.
Interesting, uh, it does feel like repeat there more often than not, Dieterino, that was cringy, I mean, I folded too, I don't hate it, man, I really don't. Uh, Johnny, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, we can bet this small. Try to take it down, probably like one and done it, more likely though.
Matt, what do you think, buddy?
I'm checking this.
Checking, checking, giving up, what do you think, uh?
I ain't giving up, but I'm checking.
So you check calling?
We're in position.
Agreed, so you check calling?
Checking the flop here and see what happens on the turn.
Oh, you're in position, you're checking and I get, you're not checking up, I'm talking about if he leads in the turn, you're likely folding, right, your hand doesn't get any better. Ever, right? In in some instances, you will get an offsuit Ace or King. More often than not, though, you're checked fold, right? Can we agree?
Agreed.
Because if we don't agree, there's a problem there, if you're like check calling almost every card, there's a problem, right? Check there, great cards for turn that we can use, says Marlin, wanted to big bets is dude Reno, if we check here, people always leave most of the time. Got a full turns, I think, I agree, I agree, I agree, um, I would bet small and. I would likely turn my hand into a bluff and bet big on a lot of turns. Uh, myself. I would go for the standard all the up here and really force him to have a jack or a spade that can stand heat. We get a lot of heats to fold, we get a lot of like, then nine of spades, the ten of spades to fold on turns. Uh, he bet big, uh, he the one and done, like he said he was gonna do, I would bet small for sure. And now we get called, we narrowed his range. To having jacks or spades, so I think we give up at this point. As played. And have to fold.
Yeah. And we can do it cheaper on the flop.
Yeah, I actually would have bet small, bet big, if my chip stack would allow it. I bet five hundred, he's got thirty-five hundred behind, there's. Twenty-five in the pot, he's got thirty-five hundred behind. And then I could bet.
It is, it is a one and done, or else.
Yeah, I guess we stacked big where it is dude, um, maybe it is a one and done. My normal play would be to go small big, but I just don't think we have the stack to do that here.
Are we ever betting big with flush though?
I mean, in some ways it doesn't matter. Like they still have to have a hand that can call you. You know what I mean? And I don't know what level homeboy is on here. If he's even thinking that way, you know what I mean?
Right.
Would I bet big with a flush here, no.
Yeah, so I mean, if we're, if we're not betting big here with a flush, why are we betting big? It's like we're just asking for the better self, why the?
Because if we bet small, we don't narrow the range at all, I guess we're betting big so that we can narrow the range to having a jack or a spade. And we know where you are, we don't open the door. We don't open the door to them betting any turn at all, just because we checked the flop, they can now bet turn bet river. Like with impunity, I would. Uh, I don't wanna let that happen, so I'm betting to prevent that. Um, if I bet small, I guess I don't get much. Information, right? If I bet big, I again get all the worst, the junkie, um. The junkie space is full, which is a good thing. Force him to have a good spade. Or a jack, which I think is a good thing. Um, so yeah. I think for that reason I would do it. A twospin, this is an open session, uh, how strong would a jam look here on the turn? Um, the problem is, is again, like. We bet big, so we narrow him to having a jack or a good spade, when we jam here. Like, we're only getting a good spade to fold?
We're blocking.
Jack's like never fucking folding, right?
Yeah, it's like.
But we don't have a spade, so.
Yeah, it's like, I don't know, like, what the fuck is he folding, I don't think we have enough fold equity.
Especially when we bet big, we bet small and then jam turn, that would be interesting, I might be able to get down with that, and that's kinda what I'm tossing up versus the bet. You know, I would like, definitely like that better. Yeah, for sure, then just jamming. Or checking and then jamming rather. Cause that doesn't make sense. Do you know, it's up, that's all.
I uh, I sent you one in Discord.
Okay, let me get to it. Let me get to it.
Let's test.
There's just one hand though.
Uh, what was it called?
Uh, toes Twitch.
You guys hear me? Check if my stream is up, my network. Like my Twitch just crashed.
I see you, you're fine.
That's weird.
I still see.
What's up with the report here?
Where's it at?
I got both, yeah, pretty good.
Trying to be good, right, it was a.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it was winning, yeah. Should be there. You opened it, right?
Yeah, I saw it, see one hand. No tags selected, new stats, my reports. Switch to me. Uh, refresh me. No reports, all hands is here.
Opening up my uh, chat on my phone.
Denied Johnny.
The whole Johnny.
Uh, you wanna export it and uh.
No support for you.
Like get the link and do that with?
Export it and hit the link?
Yeah, like we normally put it in our uh. In our chat.
Yeah, I ju- well, I took it and I, and I dragged it out of it.
Yeah, I mean, do you wanna put it in the hand replayer thing and do it that way instead of doing it this way?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
While you're doing that, I got my hand stream back up, we got. I don't know, like fifteen minutes or so more.
Fifteen minutes in chat?
Pocket ten, everybody's opening. Cause we're all geniuses. And we get called, Ace sideboard, see better know, Dog Wisdom?
Gonna check.
Check, see better know, Matt?
Check, could he check?
Uh, we opened, right?
We did.
Uh, yeah, I checked.
Check, red.
I'm gonna check second.
Check, Jeff checks. Did I miss somebody, I feel like I missed somebody. Johnny, did I go to you, you said check.
Yeah, I said check.
Marlon says thirteen twenty-five. He's not scared. Um, I kinda like the bet too, I think it was one of those spots where like. I'm gonna force him to have an ace here and. It's only gonna get worse. And uh. Yeah, I think I would lean toward bet thirteen seventy-five. Actually. I kinda like it Marlon. There's thirteen. Look at that, great minds think alike. And we get clicked.
So gross.
Now what are you doing Marlon, see what you, see the predicament, you got us in? Uh, what are you doing Dog Wisdom?
Come on, Marlon.
Where'd it go, Marlon?
Fucking sucks. Uh, I'm gonna throw up.
Okay, so puke. Marlon says it's flattening.
Then I, I click call.
Puke and call, uh, Marlon says call, what do you think, uh, Matt?
I'm out.
Matt's gone, what do you think Johnny?
Uh, we can click back. I think we have.
Be committed to calling this turn bet, cause he's stacked the pot way over.
Yeah, you're just gonna go with it, so. It's either, it's either like a jam and just making playful, or you fold, and there's so many aces, like, I think we just fold.
I don't think jamming is an option at all. Uh, lucky you have to call jam on the. Turn says dude Reno. Pretty well agreed. Uh, Red, what do you think? Turn of broke, maybe broke, I mean, why are we going broke Marlon, on an AC board? With pocket ten. I think it's full too. And we just don't beat anything. He's got a flush odds, likely got overs, and then we're not even ahead against that yet. I like the fold. Pocket three, some of the gun, folding.
Open it sometimes, but.
I don't. Or maybe. Twenty-five and under, I don't think so.
Alright guys, I gotta get going.
Yeah, we're gonna wrap this in ten minutes too, thanks for hanging out, man.
See ya.
Easy doozy, twenty-seven fourteen eight, what are you guys doing here?
Yeah, twenty big blinds, I'm actually gonna rip this in his eye.
Yep. I'm with horn, I'm ripping it.
Matt, you jamming?
Yep, all day.
Nice, Marlon's raising, what size raising it, you jamming, Marlon, you going smaller than that?
Can't really raise it, you don't have a whole lot to raise with. Gonna get it in.
I mean, you could raise it to four K, right? Possible.
It's not enough.
Click it back.
I ain't clicking it back for these dudes.
Click back. Uh, Justin he folds, uh, I'm necessarily eight or four, but I do think this is a good spot to jam it for sure. And we do jam it. And pick up the pot. Queen, Jack, facing the early raise, what are you doing here, Dog Wisdom?
I'm just folding here.
Folding, Matt, folding.
Yeah. I guess. Real suited, I call.
Yeah, yeah, against an early position, yeah, I'm letting go.
Me too. Uh, eight, ten, I opened, I think that's okay. I don't know if we're near a bubble or anything, uh, we get punished. Fold your eight, ten suited. Uh, seven, six, some of the gun on the shortest stack, doesn't seem good. Everybody just jamming here, right, nothing to see?
Yep, little, little toe army agreement jam.
Last time I tried to squeeze Jeff, I had ten, seven against his aces and one, see, squeeze is good.
There you go, I, I, I sent you one.
Where'd you put it? Got it. Here. Well, let's see Johnny's hand, we'll call this one a wrap.
Alright Johnny, let's see what you got.
Let me actually pay attention this time, I got distracted by chat. Casper pops it. Cool, two and a half X. This must be a home game or something, right?
It is.
Um, did you three bet? Um, Ace five suited? Yeah, I actually don't hate the three bet, definitely don't, um. Ace five suited, I think is actually a pretty good one. To three bet, and then get it in, get open under in the flush draw, yeah, seems pretty standard to me, man. You're ahead of aces right now. Or kings at least.
You got shit done equity here.
I guess my question was, do I float, do I float the uh? Do I just float the flop? And let him spill more?
Because the turn comes and he's gonna shut down, you wanna get your value now.
Yeah, agree.
Hook her up and go away, yeah, you're not gonna get any more out of that.
Yeah, man, there's eleven hundred out there, you have eighteen hundred in your stack, like, get it in now, I agree with that.
That's what I was thinking too, I just wanted to make sure my math was.
What did he exactly show up with?
Does, does it not show? He had eights.
It ate, so perfect example, right, like, we might lose him when the queen comes on the turn. Right? Um, so yeah, definitely, definitely good. Definitely good. Cool, that's the last hand, guys, good study session today. Super good. Cool, I appreciate it, oh, uh, no delay. No delay. Uh, but you made it, but you made it right at the end, Ricky, you made it right at the end, we're out of here. Um, so yeah, I appreciate hanging out, we had a good round of viewers, I'm not sure how many viewers you had on your stream horn, but. I had between twenty-five and thirty on mine the whole time, which is great for this. Pick a ten, nice, very nice, Johnny, I hope you had a good turnout for this too, um, guys, let me know. Marlon says no more, uh, make sure you check his inputs by the spot, paid a bunch of money, I know that. Um, yeah, let me know what you thought of these, um, this was the first study session jam I've. Ever done, actually, um, I've been a part of a few, but this is the first one I ever posted. Um, so let me know if you like them, I've been thinking about. Doing them more often in general, we won't do them on Wednesday nights always, cause that's my dedicated to team toe night, this time I was triple dipping. Um, because I got a crazy week next week, but uh. Yeah, and then I'll find a different day to do it with you guys, uh, so that I don't just, you know. Take away from the guys from team top who are, you know. Up on the pedestal, um, so yeah, I appreciate you, let me know if you liked it, let me know if you have any hands and you wanna do this again, post them in the Discord. You can get in there, Jeff said it was a great idea to do this, shout out to Jeff Jam, I know he's not being facetious, but he was the guy who started putting this in. My head, dude Reno says a hundred percent more study champs, I've already been talking with sixes, um, everybody knows that sixes and I studied together. Uh, Ricky says she likes uh, study streams too, um, six and I studied together, um, a bunch. And so he and I are down to do more of this, everyone's always wondering like, what do we do in our? Um, study groups, and I wanna see what that's like, so we're definitely gonna have that coming down. The pipe, I don't know when, it won't be next week, might be the week after, um, and in those, we'll see, like, we uh. We go pretty deep, uh, he and I, so that would be some next level stuff as well, so we'll kinda get the whole spectrum there.
And another thing is if one of us gets partnered, we'll be able to do like, stream duo mode or whatever, where it's like. It's like you're playing James Bond and like, all the, all of the streamers up to four are on one stream channel.
Dream.
Feature they run out, so.
Forget what they called it.
Yeah, it's called uh, stream of pollution. Um, so yeah, uh, yeah, I think that'd be cool, um, do the thing like spraggy and uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so yeah.
Yeah, we need the followers to do it, what is an average, I don't know, what is it?
Seventy-five average viewers for the month, and that's the only thing, I, I crush every other statistic, but that seventy-five hours viewers a month is tough. Cause I average about thirty myself, and then on home game nights, it's usually fifty to eighty, and then every once in a while, we get the nice folks, right? But uh, you can do it now in multi twitch, uh, you can do that, but it, I don't think it's the same as the partner. Team. Right, uh, but you can't do multi twitch, and you know what, next time, if we got Dog Wisdom and Johnny Be Good uh, out there with us. Maybe we'll do the multi twitch, I won't have the link out there for you guys, so you can kinda get it from every angle, right?
Yeah, there's an official one, once one of us is partnered.
Right.
Cause I wasn't ready.
Uh, dude Reno says, uh, forty bucks for thirty box teams, that's pretty good, uh, I got. Twenty-five or thirty bucks myself, overall.
Well, out of here, guys, I gotta do, it was a good session.
Um, so yeah, good stuff with the bots, and uh, like to see some of my stuff when I play the series, uh, absolutely, you know, I'm gonna play the online stuff too. Um, the online bracelet events too, and uh, I'll be doing a lot of. Damn, Marlon got nineteen dollars and eighty-three cents, he's been playing on ACR for like two weeks. Uh, but yeah, I'm gonna be doing some vlogs to and from. The World Series and uh, all the stuff that I'm playing around town, we'll be doing the stream house again like we did last year, six is gonna stream from here for the. Thousand dollar bracelet event, we'll see who else is in town with computer that wants to stream from here as well, so we'll get that going, so all that coming down the pipe, guys. If you haven't done so, make sure you click the follow button for me, uh, thank you for all the subs, thank you for the followers we got, thank you for the hosts, make sure you click the follow button for our buddy Dog Wisdom, who just left. But has uh, been streaming this as well, and Johnny Be Good, we'll get the. But has uh, been streaming this as well. And Johnny Be Good, we'll get the cast of man out there for them. Make sure you give the toe army. All that love and uh, that's it, guys. I will see ya soon. We'll see you. Peace.
Thanks, man.